Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. If you wish to make a general public comment or public comment on a particular item on the agenda, you may indicate by messaging via the Q and A to be unmuted or type your comments so it may be read into the record. Please be aware that written public comments, including your name, may become public information.
Okay, welcome everyone and thank you for your patience while we got this thing up and running. So before we start, we'd like to invite everyone to do the pledge of allegiance. So invite everyone to start. Ready?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a minute? I just want to let you know on my computer where I'm logged in, it still says the webinar has not begun yet.
Oh.
So I'm not sure if the public is in the meeting yet.
They are. It shows of 19 participants.
Okay.
You just have to restart, close it and then re-click the link, Marissa. That's what I had a problem with that too, but it came in right away after that.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna start, we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Ian, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
A nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda, Marissa?
I have none.
Okay, we need a motion for the council to approve the agenda.
I motion.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that has passed. Okay, awards, presentations, appointments, proclamations, we have none. Next item is citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public when recognized by the mayor should come forward to the lecture and identify yourself and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by this council this evening and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. Are there anyone or any persons who would like to make any comments? Do you s-
Do we know how they do that? I know William Bordeaux wanted to make a comment.
Questions and answers.
Yes, so Shannon explained that a second ago, so they can request in that little box, they can either type their comment or they can just simply comment, type in there that they want to be unmuted to speak their comments. And I can't tell you what the little box looks like because it's still not letting me into the meeting, but there should be a little box where he's able to type. I imagine it's probably like in the bottom right corner.
We do, it appears that William has raised his hand, so let's see if we can get him on. Hold on just a moment.
Shannon? Shannon?
Yes.
Down at the bottom of the screen it says Q and A. You click on that and you can ask questions and answers or there's a chat button where you can chat and type your question.
William, I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to participate in this council meeting. You know, I'm a longtime resident. My family's been in Colinga for over 100 years and I appreciate your consideration for the items that are on the agenda today. I think Ocean Grove and Casey Dalton has came to our rescue in the past when we needed to make a transaction and make sure that we had a strong budget. And I think that she's providing us an opportunity to do something similar. And so I hope that you seriously consider what she's trying to do and I'm here to support her in that effort and support the community in any way that I can. I've been doing that for as long as I can remember. I care about the community and I care about our economic success and I want to make sure that we have the resources necessary to provide a safe community with having a vibrant fire department and police department. And I think making decisions that provide economic opportunity and benefit for our community are paramount. And I'm here to contribute and to support that in any way I can. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Any others? Any others that like to make comments? At this time, there are no others, so we're going to go to public hearings. We have one item. It's the city council adoption of a local government plan and authorize the city manager to execute and submit a permanent local housing allocation grant application. Execute a standard agreement and subsequent amendments or modifications as well as any other documents related to the program or grant award. Mr. Brewer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight stops recommending approval of two resolutions. One is adopting the local government plan and certifying that the public had adequate opportunity to review and comment on the plan. And then approval of resolution 3983, which is authorizing the city manager to execute the program application and all the associated documents as part of the standard agreement. The California Department of Housing and Community Development released a notice of funding availability for approximately 195 million in funding for the permanent local housing allocation program for entitlement and non-entitlement local governments. The notice of funding availability is funded from monies deposited in the Building Homes and Jobs Trust Fund in the calendar year of 2019. The entitlement and non-entitlement formula allocation outlines threshold and application requirements as well as defines the method in which the funds will be distributed for entitlement and non-entitlement local governments. 90% of the money will be allocated based on the formula under the federal law to allocate CBG funds within California as specified in Title 42 of the United States Code, Section 5306. A lot of eligible activities in this program are pre-development, development acquisition, rehabilitation and preservation of multifamily, residential live work, rental housing that's affordable to extremely low, very low or moderate income households, including necessary operation subsidies. Talks about development and acquisition rehab and preservation of affordable housing, matching portions of funds in the local and regional housing trust funds, matching funds through low and moderate housing asset fund pursuant to the Health and Safety Code, Section 3176, capitalized reserves for services, accessibility modifications in lower income owner occupied housing. And there's a few other ones that are listed here that are eligible activities. The proposed plan must describe the manner in which the allocated funds will be used for eligible activities. Describe the way the local government will prioritize investments that increase the supply of housing for households with incomes below 60% of the adjusted median income. It describes the plan inconsistent with programs set forth in the housing element, our housing element, and be authorized and approved by resolution and ensuring the public had adequate opportunity to review and comment on the plan, hence the public hearing. The annual allocation for the city of Colinga is $133,109 for a five-year total of $618,000. The reason that we're moving forward with this particular process is that this is gonna provide, this is basically a way to kickstart the cottage home program that the council has recently discussed and kind of directed staff to move forward. So it's gonna provide accessibility modifications for owner occupied owners with incomes at a below 60% of AMI. It will provide homeownership by a closing cost assistance to households with incomes below 60% AMI to approximately 13 households per year in years one and two. We'll also be providing financing to two households per year for the development of the accessory dwelling units in connection with the city's cottage home program currently under development. And that will be in years three and five, three to five. So the first couple of years, we will do more of kind of the down payment assistance housing rehab program because we're actually gonna be in the process of utilizing the prior funds, which is the planning document, planning funds that we recently applied for that will help us develop the program. And then this will actually help us with the financing and support of the constructability of some of these units in future years. And then 5% of each annual allocation could be used for to cover administrative costs associated with the administration of the plan and staffing and overhead costs directly related to carrying out these eligible activities or activity costs, not subject to a cap on administrative costs. So the application and approved five-year plan are due by July 27th and then the department issuing award letters between August and October of 2020. So at that, that concludes my report with the adoption of these resolutions. This will allow us to go ahead and submit the applications. This is a non-competitive grant, so these are entitled funds that the city is eligible for by submitting the applications and providing the required documents. So once the public hearing is open and closed and voted upon, we'll be able to move forward with submitting these resolutions to the state.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so the first I- first thing we want to do is open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the public or listening that would like to make any comments on this issue?
I don't see any.
Seeing none, the public hearing section is closed. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none. So do we have a motion for the city council to adopt a local government plan and authorize the city manager to execute and submit a permanent local housing allocation grant application? Execute a standard agreement and subsequent amendments or modifications as well as any other documents related to the program or grant award?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey.
Aye.
Councilman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson.
Aye, sorry about that.
Councilwoman Stoltz.
Aye.
Mayor Lander.
Aye, thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar. We have 11 items. Item one is approve the minutes of May 7th, 2020. Item two is approval to upgrade police department's dispatch flooring. Item three is direct staff to go out to bid for vehicle maintenance on city vehicles outside of the services provided by city service center. Item four is adopt resolution number 3980, Ad Valorem Fiscal Year 2020-21, Property Tax Assessment for Public Safety Employees of the City of Colinga. Item five, excuse me, is adopt resolution number 3981 regarding certifications and claims for collection of Measure C funds for fiscal year 2020-21 and authorization for the Financial Services Director to sign the local transportation pass-through revenue certifications and claim forms. Item six is waive the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 840, amending the city of Colinga's commercial cannabis regulations to permit a second retail location and establishing regulations for onsite consumption. Item seven is waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 841, amending the commercial cannabis regulations related to establishing regulations for permitting outdoor cannabis cultivation. Item eight is waive second reading and adopt. Item eight is waive second reading and adopt ordinance number 842, rezoning the property at 150 South Hackman from mixed-use commercial to residential medium density. Item nine is direct city manager to draft an ordinance regarding timely approval of city council and planning commission minutes. Item 10 is public department second quarter report. Item 11 is public works and utilities monthly report for July 2020. Okay, I made one error. I didn't have the amended agenda. So we have to go back to, on the consent calendar, item two was approve the minutes of May 21st, 2020. Let that be noted. Is there any item that anyone would like to pull or discuss?
I'd like to pull number seven.
Number seven, ready? Any others? Okay. And, okay, what would you like, would you like to discuss that or what?
Yeah, on number seven, don't want to go into a deep discussion because previously voting on this one, it was a 3-2. I'd like to do that one on its own. Number seven is.
Can you mean number six, right?
Number six, right.
I think it's number six. Number six.
I believe he's referring to the.
Guys.
Consumption lounge, correct?
Correct, the consumption.
Yeah, I have the amended now, okay. Number seven.
That's item seven on the amended.
Okay, thank you. I had the wrong agenda, sorry. Okay, so you wanted to do what now, I'm sorry?
To vote on that one.
Vote on it separately.
Separately.
Okay, so let's, do we have a motion to, or are there any other items that you want to pull? I'm sorry.
I don't see any.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve all items with the exception of number seven? We're gonna vote on that separately?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I make the second.
Second.
May I have roll call, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who the second was.
Me, Tanya, thank you.
Councilman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoltz.
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Lander.
Aye. Okay, and then on this item seven, we were going to vote on that separately is to waive the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 840, amending the city of Colinga's commercial cannabis regulations to permit a second retail location and establishing regulations for onsite consumption or consumption lounge. Do we have a motion for approval?
So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, may I have, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoltz.
Aye.
Councilman Singleton.
No.
Councilman Atkinson.
Aye.
Mayor Lander.
No. Okay, motion passes. Okay, our next item is ordinance presentation, discussion and potential action items. We have three items. First is discussion, direction and potential action relating to rehabilitating Fresno Street from Harvard to California. Mr. Brewer.
Thank you. Mayor Council was a future agenda item requested by Councilman Atkinson and staff is just looking for a direction from the city council on how to proceed. Just a couple little background information based on the request and staff did a little bit of research on providing, so we can provide some constructive information to the council as part of this item is that Councilman Atkinson requested staff to look into the cost and scope of work for rehabilitating Fresno Street from Washington to Harvard as it's been continuing to degrade and break down over time. Staff has been working with the city engineer, developed the scope of work and rough cost estimate to rehabilitate Fresno Street from Washington to Harvard. The scope of work is based on the assumption that there is enough base to support and overlay. Fresno Street, it basically the scope would be Fresno Street from Washington to Harvard, pulverizing of the existing asphalt, grating the base material, grating the base material, application of three-inch pavement cap, adjusting to, adjusting the existing utilities and then replacement of curb and gutter and reconstruction of the valley gutters. And staff is on a preliminary estimate is looking at about $355,000. The fiscal year 2021 budget does not include additional funds to rehabilitate Fresno Street at this time. The council may direct staff to redistribute or prioritize the project should there be extra funds available for future project, from future project savings or potentially add it to the 2022 budget as we prepare for that. One additional thing I wanted to include, we did reach out to the Council of Governments after the staff report had been written and looked at the status and amounts of the funds we have available in our congestion mitigation air quality funds, lifeline funds. Those are the CMAC funds and then also the STPG grant funds, which are in lifeline funds. And those, we both have some funding available. So I think that if the council so chooses to move in this direction that we would potentially have the funding available to make this a federal project. We would just need to verify a few things with COG if council gives direction to confirm that this particular area would be eligible for the use of federal funds. But there is eligible funding through both RSTP and the CMAC funds to potentially fund this project if so, if the council so chooses so. So that is my report and any questions you guys may have, but Councilman Atkinson, I'll give you the floor.
Is, so just the discussion and directions, anybody want to discuss this item?
I do have one person who'd like to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Nathan?
Yeah, are you guys there? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my comment relates to this as well as the next two items. And I just want to make it be known that the next two items, on one of the items, we're talking about having the citizens be responsible for their own sidewalks. And so I don't think it's right that council is gonna fund anyone's sidewalks by grant or anything else and then have other people be responsible for their own. I don't think that's equitable at all. And so I would like to say that on the next two items, that you either table those or you don't approve this one. And with the next two items, I don't think it's fair at all because we have an entire section of District Three that hasn't had sidewalks upgraded by grants or anything else in a very long time. And I think that that it's just not equitable to do that, to fix one part of town by agenda and then require the other parts of town to fix their stuff, to keep their trees. And so that's just my comment, so I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, I don't think at this time that we can afford the $355,000. We're what, two weeks into our, our budget? I think that's extremely steep. I would like to know, not potentially have funding. I would like to know if we for sure have funding and how much and what the cost would be left over, if any, and then bring this back for a later date, even into maybe the next fiscal year.
Okay, any other?
I'd like to see if we can find a way, obviously we're not gonna pay for it now, $350,000, we can go in debt. See if we can come up with some kind of funds, whether it be through grants or any of the other things that Sean had mentioned. And maybe in the meantime, maybe do a couple pothole fixes, fill in some potholes or something because that road's really bad.
The guys have already been out there doing some repairs from my understanding this past week. So there is, there is some work going on trying to at least keep it together. But no, I mean, the intent is that if we do street and road work, we're not using general fund money to do that. We're gonna be looking at streets and roads funds to do that. When it comes to streets and roads, it's like if we have funding available, like the CMAC and RSTP funds, those are grant funds that are strictly earmarked for streets and roads type projects. So once we confirm with COG that this funding could be, we could use this specific fund, these funds that are eligible for street projects, we can come back and give you a full revised, and you kind of reiterate the scope as well as what the funding source is. But we never want to suggest the use of general fund money to do streets and roads when we do have ongoing allocations of street funds on an annual and bi-annual basis. So there would be no impact to the overall general fund when it comes to doing work on this type of project.
That's, that's basically what I'm looking for with this agenda, with this item.
Yeah, that's just what I was saying. Thank you.
So based upon all the information that's been discussed right now, I would like to suggest until you have a little bit more concrete evidence on it, or information, I should say, we could bring that back. I know that, I haven't seen the agenda for COG yet. That should be coming up next week. But anyway, hopefully we'll see where it's at, if everyone's agreeable. We'll table that until future date. Is that agreeable with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item two is introduce and waive first reading and ordinance number 843, amending the ordinance related to sidewalk curbs and gutters. Larry? Mr. Miller?
I can go ahead and take this. The, the ordinance you have before you is kind of a housekeeping item in terms of kind of clarifying some of the regulations regarding sidewalks. And staff is just recommending that the council approve an amendment to the sidewalks, crosswalks, curbs, gutters and driveways ordinance. Ordinance 843 establishes regulations regarding curbs, sidewalks and gutters. As it currently written, lacks any language to indicate who is responsible to maintain sidewalk, who inherits liability and then the enforcement pathways. It only outlines permitting related to new sidewalk construction. It's often a point of confusion to many residents. We get a lot of questions regarding who's responsible, who's not, you know, for sidewalks. Staff has prepared revisions to the existing ordinance that would generally shift the responsibility of sidewalk repair and maintenance to abutting property owners and define enforcement as such. The Streets and Highways Code already identifies the regulations and the responsibility of the property owner. This ordinance just clarifies that responsibility and establishes liability of the property owners for, for issues related to the sidewalk that's created by the property owner. There still is the situation where it could be something that's created by the city where it in turn be the responsibility of the city. But the Streets and Highways Code establishes that it is solely the responsibility of property owner to take care of their particular sidewalk. The intent of this ordinance is not that the city is going to come out and go do a strict enforcement of uncompliant sidewalks as we know from our ADA transition plan, that we are not, that there are several property, and there are several sidewalks that are out of compliance. There's areas that are, that have no, that have no curb ramps, no sidewalks at all. And it is ultimately the priority of the city to continue to fund those to rehabilitate sidewalks and get to that point by prioritizing the level of disrepair the sidewalks are in. However, when there are certain types of egregious situations caused by the property owner, there are situations where the city would have the ability to be able to ensure that that sidewalk is repaired by the property owner. But it's not the intent by the adoption of this ordinance, nor I would assume by the council to start going out and enforcing non-compliant trip hazards. It's more else just establishing what's already in state law and putting it into a local ordinance. Again, this is something else that was provided by PARZAC in terms of the risk assessment to put into language the ambiguity that's currently in our sidewalk ordinance to ensure that we at least have a path to get sidewalks rehabilitated as well as create a liability to reduce the liability on the city's part when it's in terms of situations that are not created by the city. But again, that's, that's my report. If you have any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Counsel, counsel, any questions or comments?
Yeah, are we saying that we're only gonna enforce this if the homeowner or the property owner is the ones who made damage to the sidewalk? So what happens if like there's a city tree and the roots are causing the sidewalk to come up off the, off its original foundation?
The cities.
Who pays for that then?
Oh, sorry, the city's still, that would be status quo for the city. Essentially, if there are those issues which we've already, we know and see in certain areas, it comes down to funding and the ability to go ahead and do it. I mean, if we could and we could do it by, you know, a snap of our fingers, we would, we would eliminate, you know, all of the sidewalk issues that we have. We are just trying to take the, as much as we can through our grant funds, active transportation funds. As you know, we have a large project in ATP3 that's going to do a significant amount of improvements, of sidewalk improvements. Then we have the award for our Pacific project that includes $2 million in safety improvements from crosswalks and sidewalks and curb ramps and lighting throughout all of that area over there near Forest and Sacramento Street, Pleasant, Houston, all of that, which is gonna be included in that project. So the city has made efforts where it can find funding to fix those things. We're like, perfect example with the trees bringing up those roots. That will be a discussion on the next item is the responsibility of the trees and how that was created. Because if the city doesn't have irrigation, it's not necessarily the city's. Because if the city doesn't have irrigation, it's not necessarily the city's issue when it comes to that tree being in that location because the city's not watering it, it's not maintaining it. However, it is the effort to move forward and try to fix as many sidewalks as we can with grant funds. We just don't get a whole lot of money strictly for sidewalk improvements. But it's not our intent to change any efforts, change enforcement efforts that we currently have in place. That's why our bringing this was really more of a housekeeping item to be in line with the Streets and Highways Code.
So I'd agree that it's not our intention, but is the, the language that it's written right now, could a future council have different intentions with the same language that's in the ordinance right now?
They could with or without the ordinance because state law in the Streets and Highways Code already places the responsibility on the property owner and provides an enforcement mechanism. This just makes it easier to allow the public to be able to know what's on the books here locally. Because under the Streets and Highways Code, it just has to be notified more periodically to the, to the citizens because it's a state law. And so not everyone's going through, you know, fumbling through the Streets and Highways Code, looking at what impacts their properties or doesn't impact their properties.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify to everyone, this isn't changing anything. This is already in place. It's just clarifying it and it would put it in the city's municipal code, which is where the public generally goes to look for things relating to their property in the city. So it's just cleanup language to add it there. It's not necessarily changing anything. If there was an issue with a sidewalk, it's not going to be handled any differently today, or I'm sorry, tomorrow. Whether you pass this or you don't, it's just making it easier for the public to understand.
Any other questions or comments in regards to this item?
Mayor?
How do we make the determination of, so? It seems like this is very, very broad. I can't get, how do we make the determination on who's going to pay for what?
Sean?
It, it really comes down to what ultimately the responsibility falls on the property owner. But if there is a circumstance based on an investigation, whether or not it's caused by the city or whether it was caused by the property owner. If it's just a deterioration of the sidewalk, that would just fall under a maintenance issue. That would be, that would fall on the property owner. But it'd be where in the circumstance where say there's a street tree that the city irrigates, it's tied to a main irrigation system. And that tree is now lifting up the sidewalk, that would be a situation where we the city's responsibility. Say for instance, you have a property owner that has a tree in their front yard and the roots have been over the year, over the years, starting to begin to lift the sidewalk. That would ultimately become the responsibility of the, the property owner. And that would ultimately come out if there is an issue where you have a trip and fall or an issue that's brought up. That's all handled through just a claim, whether the city would accept responsibility or not.
Okay. So it's just like, as an example, my property in front of my sidewalk, or my sidewalk in front of my house is cracking, the road is deteriorating. There's some issues with compaction over there, I understand. So anyway, the persons on that street, are they going to be, once somewhere along the way, all that sidewalk's going to have to be replaced? Who knows when, but that's going to happen. So who, whose responsibility does that come under? The property owner or the city?
Ultimately, that comes, it would be, it comes down to it's the responsibility of the property owner. However, that circumstance is a unique circumstance because we're currently working on that right now because we're going to be discussing that with PG&E because we may, we feel that there may be some issues and, you know, an issue with the way that the, some of the trenching had been done in the past has caused a lot of that issue. And that's why we're working with them in that situation. So that's kind of a unique situation because there may be a third party that may be contributing to the deterioration of that sidewalk. We're in certain circumstances where you've got lifted sidewalks. It's more of just kind of an investigative kind of thing. But as, as it is, it's like if that's occurring, the city's going to be looking at those areas and, and we can fix those. We can do, we can do little asphalt patches, we can grind them down. There's things that we can do even though it may or may not be the responsibility of the property owner. The goal is to go in and try to fix some of these things if we have the funds to do it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We have a.
Are we have someone making a comment?
Hold on just a moment.
Yeah, hold on.
Nathan, you can go ahead and speak.
All right, so by adding this to the municipal code, which it's currently not in the municipal code in this current language, you're actually tying the property owner into liability. You're creating the Public Works Director is kind of a czar to see over this. And it's very broad term and there is absolutely in this language, no room for interpretation by the public. There is a spot where this could go to council for appeal. But basically, if the public works submits to you and says that you need to fix a sidewalk and you don't, they can now put a lien on your property. I don't know if you guys actually read this, but this is a lot more than what the highway codes and whatnot currently specify. And it's not specified currently in the Kalanga Code. I don't know if you guys, like I said, have read this or not, but there's an, I totally disagree that there's just like little minute instances around town. We have an entire town who has this problem. Houston Street is completely destroyed if you look at the sidewalks. So who's going to be responsible for those sidewalks? So let's say the Public Works guy goes out there and hands someone a ticket or a fix-it ticket basically, and they can't come up with those funds. So what, they appeal to the council? So this creates an entire czar of someone going around and doing this. Now, just because you guys are saying that, that this isn't your intent, I'd like to see that put in the language that this isn't your intent. In fact, I'd like to see it put in there that there's no, that the damages don't come down to that. It's just not fair that you've chosen, we've chosen to use grants and things to fix certain sidewalks and not others. I remember when I was on council, I tried to get District Three because that was the district I was on fixed. We have an entire area on East Pleasant, on Houston Street, that entire area, the sidewalks are destroyed. And I'm sure there's areas all over town that are like that. And this is going to set those people up to have, to, to get notices saying they have to repair something that they're not going to be able to fund to repair. And not only that, I don't think it's fair when the city doesn't repair their own sidewalks. We still have city sidewalks that have, that have problems and you're going to be requiring the citizens. And I, I understand that you, that you're saying that's not your intent, but that's what's in writing. And so if it's not your intent, please take the writing out so that it doesn't say those, those things. I'm not going to waste your time to read the entire thing. That's your guys' job. But I suggest reading it and it's really not fair and it's not equitable. And I would also say that there's a potential for a lawsuit if you try and enforce this in an area that has not gotten street repairs. Someone's going to complain and say this isn't fair to us. You did all the rest of it. You did other areas in town and haven't done this to our area. And I could see there could be a potential for a lawsuit on that. So I'd just like to see you guys change this before you pass it so that it's equitable and so that it, it doesn't incur someone to dictate over all the streets and roads. And then, you know, people have to pay for something that they really can't afford. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Is there one more?
No, there are no more.
Okay, thank you. So any other discussion from the council? Seeing none?
I will, I'll just say that for me, this is way too broad. I think it leaves the future open for future councils to possibly change what our intent is when we're passing it. I'd like to see it a lot more narrow. I'd like to see the scope a lot more narrow and defined when a property owner is responsible and when they're not. I'm, I'm fine with if, you know, it's the fault of the property owner, but I want to see it also in the, in the ordinance itself.
Okay.
This is my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Okay.
I have one thing to, just to kind of mimic the, the public comment. There was one thing in full disclosure that when, when Nathan had mentioned about the liability, that is one thing. Although all the other language in the ordinance is relatively consistent in terms of the process, the enforcement, the liens, all of that is consistent with the Streets and Highways Code. However, the one thing that the courts have left in determination, interpretation in terms of the state statute is the liability issue. And that is one thing that is in the ordinance that, that basically places the liability on the property owner. Streets and Highways Codes places the responsibility on the property owner as well as the enforcement process that a local agency can proceed with. However, the liability issue is something that has been left up to the local agencies and that is in the ordinance. So I just want to be for full transparency that that is something that can be removed or changed if that's something the council so chooses. But all the other language in the ordinance is, is pretty much, and the city attorney can even concur or, you know, you know, follow up, but that it's consistent with the Streets and Highways Code. It's not something that we're creating this new enforcement mechanism.
And counsel, I just would like to add that the liability language, the reason that that was added is that's requested by PARZAC.
Even if we look at 3A, I mean, look how broad that is. Any sidewalk, any portion of sidewalk that is out of repair, that could be anything. And I think especially if you're, you're looking at the poor side of town, how are they going to fix something like that? They're not going to have any money to fix that. And what do, what do we say? I mean, right, so even 3A, we'll look at 3A. It's out of, the sidewalk is out of repair. Well, what if it's the city's fault? And how do we determine if it's the property owner's fault or not? I mean, can we say if this sidewalk is out of repair because of the property owner or something like that?
You know, if you look at section eight, it says the person or entity required by section seven two zero five to maintain and repair the sidewalk area shall owe a duty to members of the public to keep and maintain the sidewalk in a safe and non-dangerous condition. Okay. So as was stated earlier, there are sidewalks all over this town that are in disrepair. We do know that. But the property owner becomes liable. So if a person is of age and is walking down that sidewalk and trips and breaks their leg or breaks their hip, is this stating that the property owner becomes liable? Is that what that's?
That is what it, that is what it would be stating if that damage was not caused by the city. And that is what PARZAC is requesting because otherwise the city could potentially be paying those claims out of the city's general fund for something that was caused by the property owner.
As a property owner, I don't agree with that at all. Because my sidewalk's fine for now, but I know there's people in this town who have sidewalks that are in really bad condition. And as stated, they cannot afford to repair that sidewalk. And you know, is it, the potential of that happening is there? Is it going to happen? Let's certainly hope not. But if it does, that is going to be terrible, terrible for the person that got injured, terrible for the person that is the property owner because they can't afford it. And as stated earlier, they're probably subject to legal action. I think we need to look at this. I would like to table this and bring it back. If that's agreeable with everyone to address that issue.
Is that agreeable to me?
Right?
That's agreeable.
Ron?
Yeah, go ahead.
This, Tanya, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just don't like the word. I'm agreeable to that. I just don't like the choice of words for the poor side of town.
Yeah.
That doesn't sound very good. I mean, does that mean like across the other side of the tracks or, you know, or the upper class? So we need to watch that language.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to table that item. Thank you everyone for their comments and their input. Item three is introduce and waive first reading of ordinance number eight four four, amending the ordinance related to trees and shrubs. Mr. Miller?
I'll, I'll take this one.
Okay.
So we're, this is a, another kind of update ordinance related to street trees. Trees and shrubs is really kind of what the section of our Title Four, Chapter Three of the municipal code. It is related to establishing clear rules on maintaining trees and shrubs in the city. Ordinance eight forty-four establishes regulations regarding trees and shrubs. And as written, it does not make a clear who is responsible for maintaining trees in various settings. It's often a point of confusion with many residents, similar to kind of the discussion with sidewalks. Staff has prepared revisions to the existing ordinance that would establish clear language on who is to maintain trees within the city limits. Much of the revision is dedicated to finding what a park strip is and whom is maintaining those within those areas. Additionally, language was added to clearly define who is responsible for street trees. In most cases, these reservations will solidify responsibility to abutting property owners. Except in cases where irrigation systems already, for example, Elm Street, where the city maintains large portions of the trees and irrigations. So we provided a copy of the ordinance. And this is just basically an ordinance that's going to help clarify the responsibilities for street trees when owners want to, you know, take them out and maybe do a planter in front of a park strip or street trees in front of a, a commercial business. Those types of things where the city doesn't necessarily have the ability to maintain them due to the way in which the irrigation system setup, because there's unique situations throughout the city. And so we wanted to clarify that through the development, through the revision of this ordinance so that those those situations, the questions that we get were easier able to be answered.
Also, any comments, questions?
No, I don't, I don't see any.
Seeing none. So do we have a motion to introduce and waive first reading of ordinance number eight four four, amending the ordinance related to trees and shrubs?
Also move?
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second call, please.
Mayor Protim Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stolz?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
I vote aye. Okay, our next item is announcements, city manager, any announcements?
I have none.
Council members?
Oh wait, sorry, sorry, I do have one. I just wanted to remind everyone in case they hadn't seen on the city's Facebook page that we do have, we did have to cancel the free dump day, the city cleanup event on Saturday. Due to the fires that are going on, we didn't want to back up traffic because the fire engines need to be able to get in and out. So that will be rescheduled for a later date likely towards the middle of August.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any announcements?
I have one.
Okay.
The, the city hall roof is being repaired right now. And I just wanted to let everyone know that that contact I made at one of the many conferences and have been working with the company and his vendors for probably about a year to bring that to fruition. So he'll be out next Tuesday to check on the workmanship.
Thank you. Mayor's announcements, I have two announcements. One is that the fire chief, city manager and myself met with the fire crew out at a briefing yesterday. Very, very informative. And I have to tell you, it's pretty darn impressive to see how in tune this, these firemen are in fighting this fire up here. Very, very impressive. We now have updates on a regular basis as to what is going on. It looks like they're making some headway. So this is really good news. My other announcement is not so good and that is former city manager, Mr. Steve Julian has passed. He passed last night. It's just an unfortunate situation. Anyway, that is all that I have at this time. Any future agenda items? Counsel, any future agenda items? Seeing none? We have closed session, none. So this So this meeting is now adjourned. And I really want to thank you all for your patience in us trying to do this new program. It seems like, once we got a handle on it, it looks like it worked rather well. Okay, this meeting is now adjourned.